I call the meeting of the Governor's City Council, February 19th, 2019, to order. Mr. Clerk will call a roll.
Counselor Boone?
President.
Counselor Boudreau?
President.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Present.
Counselor Ronald Cormier?
Present.
Counselor Gravel?
Present.
Counselor Harder?
Present.
Counselor Christine Johnson?
Present.
Counselor James Johnson?
Present.
Counselor Kozinskius?
Present.
Counselor Walsh?
Present.
President Graves?
Present.
Our rise for the opening prayer to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh, my God. We thank you for bringing us together this evening, inspire us toward a peace and sound decisions, and direct us toward the entertainment of the city government. We create the election protect all the people of our city, to support our ideas, inspire us, and we deliver here to the union in harmony. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is anybody recording tonight's meeting? Reading of minutes of prior meetings. Reading and approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of February 4th, 2019.
Mr. President?
Yes, Counselor.
Make a motion to waive the reading of the minutes and accept them as presented.
Second motion with the intent to move that they be amended.
Yes. Motion made and seconded that the minutes be adopted as written without reading. Any discussion on the motion, Counselor Walsh?
Motion, Mr. President, that came to light during the course of our Finance Committee meeting, that the provision in the minutes having to do with the ordinance amendment that we sent to first printing involving the ban stand ordinance. A prior version of it, not the one that we passed at our last meeting, a prior version of it was included in the minutes in error, to which the city clerk effusively apologized.
That's true.
And further that that incorrect version is the one that was published in the paper.
That's correct.
So, in addition to moving, at this point, to amend the minutes so that the proper version of what we actually passed at our last meeting would be substituted for what's there, I move that they be amended in that manner. Can I make that in form?
Sir.
Motion made by Counselor Walsh, seconded by Counselor Cormier, that the minutes, the waiving of the minutes be waived, but the minutes to be adopted will be amended to reflect the accurate version, the correct version, of the proposed ban stand committee ordinance, the one that was passed at our last meeting. Correct?
Yes, and that was...
Will it be republished?
Well...
We'll get to that.
We'll take it down.
Okay, so that's the motion. Any further discussion on the motion? Yes, Counselor Walsh.
Just as an anticipation of the matter coming up on the council agenda, because it wasn't published properly, it needs to be republished for a first time. So, we'll be moving for rep publication at first printing rather than second printing when that comes up on the agenda. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further discussion? There be none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Communications from the Mayor, number 10056. Measure confirming the Mayor's appointment of Karen Dineen to Member Golf Commission for a term expiring January 29th, 2022. Report from the Finance Committee.
Report from the Finance Committee is favorable. This is a reappointment to the Golf Commission. The Finance Committee was unanimously favorable in a move confirmation of the appointment.
Motion made by Counselor Walsh, seconded by Counselor Cormier, to confirm the Mayor's appointment of Karen Dineen to Member Golf Commission for a term expiring January 29th, 2022. Any discussion on the motion? There be none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number 10057. Measure confirming the Mayor's appointment of Alexander Dernalawitz to Member Golf Commission for a term expiring February 5th, 2022. Report from the Finance Committee.
This is a new appointment of Mr. Dernalawitz. It was felt by the Finance Committee that he would be a very, very capable member of the commission and a pretty good golfer as well. Not that that was the only quality. But we were unanimously favorable in a move the appointment.
Motion made by Counselor Walsh, seconded by Counselor Cormier, to confirm the Mayor's appointment of Alexander Dernalawitz to Member Golf Commission for a term expiring January 5th, 2022. Any discussion on the motion? Counselor Boudreau?
I've known Mr. Dernalawitz for some time now. He is an upstanding member of our community with a love for the game and will bring a lot to this commission, so I support this.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number 10058. Measure confirming the Mayor's appointment of Kristen Salerno to Senior Animal Control Officer for a term expiring January 28th, 2020. Report from the Finance Committee.
Finance Committee is favorable. This is a reappointment. These are both, this one and the following one, will be for animal control officers, and I make a motion that we confirm the appointment.
Second motion.
Motion made by Counselor Cormier, seconded by Counselor Walsh, to confirm the Mayor's appointment of Kristen Salerno to Senior Animal Control Officer for a term expiring January 28th, 2020. Any discussion on the motion? There be none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 10059. Measure confirming the Mayor's appointment of Cheryl Slack to Animal Control Officer for a term expiring January 28th, 2020. Report from the Finance Committee.
Finance Committee is in favor, reviewed this, and I so move the confirmation.
Second motion.
Motion made by Counselor Cormier, seconded by Counselor Walsh, to confirm the Mayor's appointment of Cheryl Slack to Animal Control Officer for a term expiring January 28th, 2020. Any discussion on the motion? There be none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 10060. Measure confirming the Mayor's appointment of Michael Nicholson to trustee Williams Rockwell Educational Gift Fund Board of Trustees for a term expiring January 28th, 2022. Report from the Finance Committee.
Report from the Finance Committee is favorable of Mr. Nicholson. As you know, he served as an assistant to the Mayor for a number of, for a period of time, and during that time, personally as a member of this board, Mr. Nicholson served as the Mayor designated the board and served very capably and served actually as the Chair of the committee in the Mayor's absence. So, I'm very happy to move the confirmation of his appointment.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Walsh, seconded by Counselor Cormier, to confirm the Mayor's appointment of Michael Nicholson to trustee Williams Rockwell Educational Gift Fund Board of Trustees for a term expiring January 28th, 2022. Any discussion on the motion? Counselor Gravel?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to mention that I was actually joking around with Mike earlier and asked him if he had anything else that he wanted to do. And it just reminded me of myself, where I serve on four different committees, and I'm really happy to see that Mike, even though that he's not working in the Mayor's office anymore, that he's still being involved in the community of Gardner. He's such a talented young man. He's got a bright future ahead of him, so I wish him nothing but the best in this appointment. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We'll take a brief recess?
Yes.
Take a brief recess so that Mr. Nicholson can be sworn in.
And Mr. Dernalawitz.
Oh, and Mr. Dernalawitz is here. Come on up. Meeting of the City Council back to order. Next item on the agenda is number 10061. Measure authorizing the city to enter into contracts for periods not to exceed five years for leasing golf carts. Report from the Finance Committee.
Finance Committee is favorable. We met with the Purchasing Director shortly before this meeting, and by going to a five-year lease, the Golf Commission will save $575 a month on the rental of these devices over the next five years. It's well worth doing, so we were enthusiastically in favor of this, and I so move the authorization.
Second motion.
Motion made by Counselor Cormier, seconded by Counselor Walsh, to authorize the city to enter into contracts for periods not to exceed five years for leasing golf carts. Any discussion on the motion? There be none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda, number 10062. A petition by National Grid and Verizon New England Incorporated for permission to install one J.O. pole on West Street beginning at a point approximately 100 feet west of the center line in the intersection of Bridge Street. Counselor Boudreau?
I guess point of inquiry, does this need a public hearing?
Yes.
Yes?
Just refer it in.
All right, so I motion we refer this to the Public Service Committee for study and report as well as schedule a public hearing.
Second. Motion made by Counselor Boudreau, seconded by Counselor Boone, to refer this matter to Public Service Committee and to schedule a public hearing on the item. Any discussion on the motion? There be none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Safety Committee, number 10053. An ordinance to amend the code of the City of Gardner Chapter 312 thereof entitled Animals by deleting and repealing Section 312-2 capital F. Public Safety Committee, Counselor Johnson.
I'd like to do two things on this. I'd like to request more time, but also additionally make a motion to also refer it to the Service Committee.
Unless there's objection, we'll grant the committee more time, and the motion is to refer this item as well, it's in Public Safety now, to refer it to Service?
Service.
To Public Service Committee.
Second.
Second, motion made by Counselor Johnson, seconded by Counselor Gravel. Any discussion on the motion, Counselor Johnson?
Purpose of referring it to the Service Committee as well as currently right now with our parks falling under the DVW, DVW sets the rules for the parks, so they should be involved.
Very well, thank you, Counselor. Any further discussion on the motion to refer it to Public Service Committee? There be none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is 10008. Measure authorizing acceptance of donations and gifts for use by the Community Banstand Committee for musical concerts and other entertainment events. Counselor Walsh?
Yes, on behalf of the Finance Committee, this is something that we were waiting to vote on until the ban stand ordinance went to a final passage. Since that won't be happening, unfortunately, because it needs to be republished for first printing, the committee asks for more time.
Thank you, Counselor. The committee will be granted more time unless there's an objection. Next item, 10007. An ordinance to amend the code of the City of Gardner Chapter... Did I miss it? Oh, I'm sorry. 100... I'm confused for a second, give me a second.
5-1, sorry.
No, no, I know, but on 10008, was there going to be a motion to send it to its first printing?
No, this is just an acceptance, it's not an ordinance amendment, so...
The next one would be...
No, I'm talking about 10008. Oh, oh, 8, okay.
That's not an ordinance amendment.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. Okay, so, well, good. It's my mistake. Number 10051. An ordinance to amend the code of the City of Gardner Chapter 600 thereof entitled Vehicles and Traffic, Article 5 Parking Meters. Mr. President? Counselor Boone? Like to make a motion to send the ordinance to first printing?
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Boone, seconded by Counselor Christine Johnson, to send the item number 10051 to first printing. Any discussion on the motion? Counselor Johnson?
This item was first referred to the Safety Committee, and the Safety Committee did vote to not approve this, 2 to 1, I being the lone vote in favor.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further discussion? This is the item that we had the informal meeting as a counsel behold earlier today. Any further discussion? There be none, all in favor, Counselor Boone?
I'm sorry, Mr. President, could I ask for a roll call vote, please?
Sure. Mr. Clerk will call a roll.
Counselor Boone?
Yes.
Counselor Boudreau?
No.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
No.
Counselor Ronald Cormier?
No.
Counselor Gravel?
No.
Counselor Harder?
No.
Counselor Christine Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor James Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor Kozinskius?
No.
Counselor Walsh?
No.
President Graves?
Yes. It's defeated 7 to 4. Next item on the agenda, number 10007. An ordinance to amend the code of the City of Gardner Chapter 156 thereof entitled Municipal Grounds Commission to add provisions relating to a Community Banstand Committee. Counselor Walsh?
As I explained earlier, there was an inadvertent error in the publication of this after we voted it to a first printing, and given the fact that it needs to be published properly on two occasions, I move that the ordinance amendment be republished after a vote in favor of it going to a first printing.
Second.
Thank you. Motion made by Counselor Walsh, seconded by Counselor Cormier, to send the ordinance to first printing, I mean, to amend... Say the motion again, I'm sorry.
We've already voted to send it to a first printing, I'm just voting, moving that it be republished.
Republished. Motion made to republish the...
First printing.
The item to first printing so that the correct version of the ordinance is published. Motion made and seconded, any discussion, Counselor Gravel?
Mr. President, thank you. I just wanted to make a disclosure to everybody here on the council. We're voting for something that I'm heavily involved with as a private citizen outside of the City Council, which is the Community Banstand Committee. I don't receive any payment for this, I volunteer all my time. We do a lot of good in the community on this committee. I just wanted to make that perfectly clear, that I'm not sure if I should recuse myself from this vote, only because I am part of the organization, but I don't think I have to, because I don't think there's a conflict, because I don't get any payment for what I do, I'm not sure.
That would be your call, Counselor, and I don't think any Counselor would have any objection, but anybody has the right to object to it, but if you felt that you had to abstain from a vote, that would be totally your call?
I think I'm going to recuse myself from this vote, just so that there is no conception of any ethical violations or anything.
I think everybody understands the position that Counselor Gravel is in, but does anybody have an objection if Counselor Gravel abstains from the vote? Okay, is there any further discussion on the motion, which I kind of screwed up what it's going to be? It's a motion to republish the ordinance to first printing with the correct version of the ordinance as we had voted on it last City Council meeting. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Motion to go into new business?
So move.
So move.
Motion made by Counselor Christine Johnson, seconded by Counselor Boudreau. Any discussion on the motion? There be none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor Cormier?
I have new business this evening, thank you.
Any counsel? No new business, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Counselor Boone. Counselor Boudreau?
29 days till spring, remember to pay attention to the Code Red parking warnings and use your common sense. If it's snowing, get off the roads. Thank you, that is all.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to make a comment. First of all, congratulations to Michael Nicholson and all the other people who were appointed this evening. One of the things I want to talk about a little bit, because it's been on Facebook, it's been in the paper, about the William Rockwell Educational Gift Fund, about how money was allocated or granted for, I believe, a study of the Gardner High School auditorium to have it refurbished, and the people on Facebook had kind of come down on the fact that they are possibly utilizing money to upgrade the auditorium at the Gardner High School, but I want people to understand something about the auditorium at the Gardner High School. It is not used a lot of the time for building body meetings. It is major, it's used more for bands, chorus, musicals, plays. Gardner Middle School uses the high school auditorium. This refurbishment of this auditorium is really for the arts, because a lot of people go there for Christmas concerts, spring concerts, sometimes you have MICA competitions standing on stage, so this is really for the arts. So, I just want people out there in the public to understand that the, I think, after taking a look at things and after talking to Mr. Nicholson, this is really an upgrade for the students, it's going to benefit them, and I'm all for the arts. I graduated from Gardner High School and I was in the band myself, and it is important to have a good stage and good acoustics in that auditorium, otherwise it does not sound very well. The other thing that I wanted to mention this evening, not a lot of people know, but on a personal note, five years ago this past Friday, Counselor James Johnson and I were married in this council chambers, which is where we had met. I think that it's, when we ran for office, people were concerned as to having a husband and a wife on the City Council, but if you look at our voting records, and I've heard many people say to me, "I would love to be a fly on your wall when you get home, because there's a lot of things that you vote against each other," which is true, he's got his opinions and I have mine, I just wanted to mention that it's not a bad thing to have two people in the same family, as we also have a father and son on the council floor, too. That's all, Mr. President, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kozinskius?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to remind everyone of the Friends of the Library Youth Book Sale this week, February 22nd from 9:43 on Friday, and February 23rd from 9:00 to 2:00 p.m. on Saturday. I also, you know, just want to congratulate everyone who was appointed tonight. Mr. Nicholson did a fantastic job as the Mayor's aide, and I held that position as well before he did, and I can say that, and he had it before I did as an intern for the Mayor, but I have to say that he just did excellent work for the city, I'm excited he's representing us in Rutland as well, and I think he's going to be a great addition to, as you know, Counselor Walsh had said, he's going to be a great addition to the committee that he's on now. And also with just another little tidbit with new Golf Commissioner, Dernalawitz, he is, I've played golf twice in my life, and he's the first, one of the first people I played golf with, and he was a fantastic teacher, and it was actually for a scholarship when I was in high school for his grandfather's scholarship, and that was a pretty cool tournament. So, it's exciting to see all these years later that he's still so involved in the community, and it's a perfect fit for him. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Gravel?
I don't know if I can follow that up, Mr. President, she almost kept up with me. So, two sports announcements, I want to congratulate the Patriots for another Super Bowl win, and the Daytona 500 Champ, Denny Hamlin, this past Sunday, so those are two of my favorite sports, and I'm really happy to see those guys win. Been a lot of talking the news lately about ice on top of tractor trailers, there was a gentleman in Winston who just got in an accident when a big piece of ice came off the top of a tractor trailer. It only takes two seconds to clean off the top of your car. I mean, I travel back and forth to Boston every day, and you would not believe how many, for lack of term, misguided people on not cleaning their cars off. I'm trying to put it politely, and my seniors next door here would be... It takes a second. I mean, a little girl, I saw her in the news, a little girl and her mom, little four-year-old, she almost got killed, she got, you know, an abrasion right on her face, by her eye. It's ridiculous, clean off your cars, I mean, it's public safety, we all want to come home safe at the end of the day to be with our families. It only takes, you know, you just never know. You've got to be more aware of what's going on, clean your cars off, I mean, it takes a couple extra seconds. We're going to have a snow event, ice event tomorrow night into Thursday morning, I just saw her on the news, it's supposed to be really icy, it's not, you know, Ice Storm of 2010 that we had, but it is going to be icy, so just take a few extra minutes leave earlier, you know, be cautious out there. I mean, again, we want to come home safe, right, to our families, so. We're still working on a ban stand, I think I got two more positions to fill up, we just contacted another ban today. I think we're going to have another great year, as Counselor Boudreau said, 39 days till spring.
29.
How many?
29.
29. Oh, I'll make sure my wife knows that, keep me in line. That's all I have tonight, Mr. President, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Johnson?
Well, I just wanted to echo the better Counselor Johnson, I just want to add one thing to it and thank the city clerk, Alan Agnelli, without his participation, it wouldn't have been possible for the past five years. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Harder?
Yes, I want to thank the Fire Department here, the Fire Department said, "I've called to the fire that was on Boone Street about maybe a week or 10 days ago, their response was excellent, and I want to thank them for what they do for us every day."
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Walsh?
At our last meeting, I commented that in the event that the ban stand committee ordinance was before us for a second printing, but the Mayor had not yet reappointed membership of that, of the Municipal Grounds Commission, that I would vote against it. Now that we don't have that ordinance to vote to a second printing, I am relieved, because while we do have two members that have been submitted by the Mayor for appointment, there are, the positions on the Municipal Grounds Position, that Commission, are five in number, not two. So, I'm hopeful that between now and our next meeting, the Mayor will have the opportunity to fill the remaining three positions to the Commission, so that I will not be faced with the decision of whether to vote in favor of it or not. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Cormier?
Nothing else this evening, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I just wanted to say something I really haven't said in the past, though I've wanted to. There's a lot of confusion out there about who I am. Which Scott Graves am I? So, I don't know, this one? It's very, I mean, it's very problematic. I have people calling me saying, "Great letter to the editor," or, "What the heck were you trying to say the other day when you sent that email?" And I have no idea what they're talking about. So, I think it's important, since I'm the president of this party, that I distinguish myself from this other Scott Graves, which is bizarre. So, I'm the one that was born and raised in Gardner, I'm the one that was the class of '82, GHS. I've started using, I used to be SG, I can't be SG anymore, so now I'm SG. I can't be SG anymore, so now I'm S-J-L-G-G, which is Scott Joseph Lefosse Golden Graves. And if I don't, and I don't let, I don't write letters to the editor, so if there's a letter to the editor, it's not me. They don't print my stuff, I'm too long-winded. I'm not on Facebook, I deleted my, my, I don't, I'm not a Facebook person, but I deleted that. I did never done Twitter in my life, I've never done Instagram, so I hope that people will know that I'm the quiet Scott Graves, although I'm not too quiet up here. Most of my, most of my communication is with my members, my fellow city councilors. I don't, I don't do a lot outside of this body, except in my business, and I'm not to be...
I hear you playing Mean Sex.
Yeah, right. So, the other thing is, there was a scam, there was a scam going around on the emails, and this never happened before, and it was somebody using my name asking for money. I don't know if you all got it, I think he's it. I was just at a board of trustees meeting at the Haywood Library, and one of the members there, one of the trustees said to me, "I just got an email from you where you were asking for money, and it looked like a scam." So, it's like, it's crazy, my name's just like getting dragged over broken glass lately, so I just wanted to say that I'm trying to distinguish myself from this other person. I don't know him from a hole in the wall, but I think it's important that the council president should be, it should be known whether or not a statement's coming from the council president, because when people hear things coming from Scott Graves, it's gonna be in their mind forever that it was me, even if it wasn't me. So, I don't know how else to fix it, other than to change my name, but anyways, so, that's, without further ado, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Motion made by Council Budrow, seconded by Council Christine Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Almighty Father, who sees us all, as we learn, we thank you for the opportunity to join deliberation and action within the course of this meeting. Blessed be the Lord, all who are gathered here, and the people who represent us as we are, in the hour of our hands, for common welfare. Till our next meeting. Amen.